Hey, good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for September 1st, 2015. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag, please.
By the flag of the United States of America, to the Republicans who stand on their ground under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. Mrs. Pollin?
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tens?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
Here. Okay. The record show before our meeting, we had a executive session supervisors did to discuss a personnel matter. Okay, Mr. Gray's giving me the sign-in sheet. First name on the list is Roland Kenny.
Good evening, Roland Kenny, Falls Township. I was going to say a lot tonight, but I'm not going to because my wife asked me not to say things.
Tell her we said thank you.
What's that?
Tell her we said thank you.
Okay. Now, I forgot. Oh. Still no...still no tax?
You talking to me?
Talk all three of us.
Are you talking about EIT?
Yeah.
No, EIT, no.
Okay.
I think that's all five of us up here. All no EIT.
Okay. Good night, God bless you.
Okay. Anybody else supposed to speak? Okay, all right. All right, we're going to move to next item on the agenda, which is Britton Industries' preliminary and final land development. Mr. Gray?
Yes, as mentioned, this is for Britton Industries located at M.Y. Lane. The applicant is proposing the creation of lease hold lines, two small parking lots, site grading, and stormwater management improvements. Representing the applicant tonight is Mr. Nate Fox.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gray. Nate Fox from Begley Carlin with our engineer Heath Dumack on behalf of Britton Industries. From Britton Industries tonight, we have Dan Carr, who's the operations manager. I think we're at a point, everything is pretty clean, if we may just go through the approval resolution, if that's agreeable?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Would you like us to give a summation of what we're doing?
Yeah, please.
Okay, great. So, it's a 22.64 acre property located on tax map parcel number 132877, which is near M.Y. Lane and partially located in Morrisville as well as Falls Township. So, obviously, we're here tonight only for the portion of the improvements of Falls Township. Mr. Dumack has shown us on the plan where we're looking. This is a mulch production operation, and as mentioned, we're here tonight because we're going to be leasing off parcels of or portions of the property, and that's defined as land development in the Falls Township zoning ordinance. I'm sorry, land development ordinance. Any further questions or go through the...go through the resolution?
I guess, well, I think it's what, are there three? I guess you're leasing off two pieces and keeping one, or is that...
Correct.
Okay. And at this point, do we have an idea? I think one of them is storage of like concrete barriers, Jersey barriers?
That's correct.
Uh, Mr. Dumack, remember, you're not going to be recorded if you're not in the mic. Sorry. Let Mr. Fox get this verified.
Sure. Absolutely. And how the parcel that will remain under Britton Industries, approximately how large is that, and can you orient the board?
The size itself is just shy of 20 acres. It's basically the remainder. You have two leaseholds, one in this area, which is for the concrete barriers, and one in this area for tractor trailers and a small garage to repair them.
Okay.
Great. And just ingress and egress to the properties, walk through what we're looking at?
The primary access and only access is my lane. We are proposing three different access points, which I believe are all existing. The primary for the mulch operations and Britton Industries is in this location. You have a second driveway access for the concrete barrier storage, and you have a third driveway access for the tractor trailers.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Heath. As far as the approval resolution, we have one zoning ordinance item that will provide a letter from our firm that the proposed development will comply with the standards identified within section 209, 29K of the ordinance, and indicate that any federal or state permits required for the operation of the site for the intended use will be obtained or applied for. That's a will comply item. We'll, of course, provide that to the satisfaction of the township staff. Saldo items, we have several waivers, which we will be...we are requesting, the first being from section 191, 31A, requesting a waiver from the ordinance to allow the cartway width of my lane to remain as existing and not be widened to 32 feet. This is an existing condition. It's more than sufficient to allow for ingress and egress of the trucks, and we do not want to disturb that or create any further issues with that, and we were asking for a waiver on that point. Any particular questions on the waiver request?
No, and I'm looking at the waivers you've requested.
Can we go through everyone?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm looking at the proposed resolution.
Yes.
If that's what you're looking at, on page six.
Yep.
B, C, D, E all refer to parking islands and curbs. This is an industrial area, so it's not really necessary. F and G and H and I are shade tree, planting of shade trees, again, industrial area. So, those are things we typically waive. I guess maybe focus on J, K, and L. M is also a pretty standard waiver. So, yeah, I think just, you know, for me anyway, assuming that J, K, and L are the ones that seem to be the most...
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
All right, that's fine, thank you. So, for J regarding the steep slopes, we're asking for a more than 15% disturbance of steep slopes, greater than 25%. We are asking for an allowance of 45.32% disturbance. This is, in our opinion, an existing condition. These are man-made steep slopes, and this is within an old drainage swell. Heath, if you don't mind pointing on the plan to what we're talking about, we don't believe this will create any issues from a drainage perspective or stormwater management perspective, and again, those are man-made and an existing condition.
Okay.
Mr. Sullivan, is that...you agree with that statement?
Yes, that's accurate.
All right. And then the next waiver we're requesting then is from section 191, 52.1B, 4B1, requiring a maximum allowance of 20% disturbance of environmentally sensitive woodlands. We are asking for an allowance of 81.67% disturbance. If...this is a total of 15,000 square feet of sensitive woodlands on the property of a 20, 22 acre and change property. So, if you look at it across the comparison of what we're actually talking about, we're talking about 15,000 square feet over a 22 acre property. And again, this is largely an existing condition for trees within the swell. Heath, do you mind showing where we're...same location, again, same condition, essentially the same justification for the waiver request? We don't believe it will cause any harm or concern to grant this waiver.
Right. But I do have a question. So, if you're coming in and you're allocating space at, looking at the eastern part of the property there, looking at your compass there, how does...so, why are we looking back at that swale that's sort of right by the dividing line between Falls and Morrisville? Why are we...why are you disturbing wetlands or trees there and why not wetlands? Why are you disturbing trees there and changing the slope?
The primary explanation is this area in this region is the bottom of the hill, in essence. The whole site slopes basically from Route 1 down to the Delaware Canal. What we've proposed, and I apologize, it's a couple pages in on the plan set, is a onsite detention, retention storm basin that starts on the Falls side and carries up and across into the Morrisville side. The majority of the system is in Morrisville, not Falls, but it does discharge, and the canal does go down into Falls Township from Morrisville. So, in order to get the storm system to work properly, what we're going to be doing is regrading basically from here over to make it more of a sheet flow storm system, and it all will sheet flow right into detention basin.
So, you're creating a stormwater management system?
Yes, sir.
Is there one on the property now at all?
No, there is not. There are culvert pipes coming off of a drainage pattern for Route 1. They start here, and they run basically to the canal. What we're hoping to do and with our design is to improve the flows and hold more water on our site. We got very good infiltration results when we did soils testing.
Okay.
So, are... Do you get approval from Morrisville? We're in the process of that, and you can talk about technically where we are.
We've had a number of conversations and meetings with Morrisville Borough. What they suggested and what we're following is they wanted Falls Township to sign off on it first. The reason being was the storm system directs the water into Falls Township as it is, so it makes more sense that the storm system should be blessed by the township engineer and the township before coming to them, so it's more courtesy.
Sure. Okay.
All right, thank you. Next waiver request, we are asking for a waiver from section 191, 521B, 4B2, requesting a waiver from the section of the ordinance to add disturbance of 80.9% of other woodlands, where 50% is the maximum disturbance allowed. And this, you correct me if I'm wrong, refers to the mulch production area, and this is space that is needed for the mulch production area.
Similar to the steep slopes, the majority of the woods on this site is actually in the Morrisville side. What we're talking about is realistically this small portion in here. The majority of the woods really is in Morrisville, not in Falls Township.
Okay.
Then, there's no questions. The only remaining waiver then is the detailing of the plan, and we're providing an aerial photo in lieu of, which leaves a pretty typical waiver. And as far as the general comments and conditions, we will agree to comply with all requirements of the proposed approval resolution. If there are any questions from the Board of Supervisors or township staff or professionals?
Okay. Questions from or comments from board members? Mr. Galloway?
Just, Mr. Sullivan, do you have any remaining concerns?
No, I don't have any remaining concerns. The stormwater system is basically also compensating for the new impervious they're putting in Falls Township. You are disturbing the Morrisville side, adding some gravel in there.
Yes.
So, you'll be disturbing trees on that side of the border as well.
That is correct.
And that's subject to approval from Morrisville Borough, and that is one of the conditions in the resolution. Other than that, I'm okay.
No further.
Okay. Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Mr. Tens?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
None.
Okay. Assuming that you've also seen the fire marshal's letter, we've had some issues with other businesses that do mulch, the fires that can start and burn for days and days and days, so I'm assuming you've taken a look at that and you'll be working with him.
We will be.
Okay.
And make sure the concerns are satisfied.
All right. Mr. Sullivan, anything else from you?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Any public comment needed? See no hands? All right, so this would be resolution 15...
20.
20. Okay. This would be granting preliminary and final for essentially a allocation of space and also construction of a stormwater management system. And again, conditional on Morrisville's approval. Is there a motion for 1520?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Items three, four, and five are all issues relating to park and rec, different operations and things going on, and we thought it would be a good idea, while we're discussing some of these items, to also have our park and rec director, Mr. Andrews, come and give us sort of an update on some of the programs that have been going on this summer and things that will continue to go on and kind of a status report, I guess. So, I'll let Mr. Andrews go ahead.
Thanks for inviting me. Really appreciate the opportunity to come talk about where we've been, where we're going, and, you know, give you an update. In late of the hot and humid weather, I can start with the Pinewood Pool, have some good news to report. This year, I've been running some numbers. I think our overall revenue, which takes in account our memberships, guest fees, concessions, programming, come swim lessons, we're going to be 13 to 15% higher than we were in '14. So, I think that's been...that's a credit to the pool staff. They've done a great job. There's three areas, I think, that have really helped us this year. Swim lessons, we went from 72 participants last year up to 94 this year, and they've all participated mostly in all three sessions. We do three two-week sessions. So, that's been a great boon for, you know, the revenue. Second is our partnership with the Gingerbread Daycare. They came in and gave us a donation for use of the pool. That's something new I don't think we've done before. That was a very, very positive relationship, and I talked to the director, and we're talking next year to continue that relationship and possibly transfer that donation into family memberships. The families seem when they came to pick up the children, seem to really enjoy the pool, so...and the family membership, in my opinion, is where we need to target. Our senior numbers are up, our individual numbers, they're going to be what they are. The family memberships, when we gained 20 families compared to 14, we're down from 13. So, I think if we steadily increase that going forward, I think that's where we need to target. There's some incentives, you know, that I plan on presenting, you know, for budget season, maybe you can help with that. We can get into that later, but I think we're on the right track. Our teen splash nights, we had five this year. I appreciate you getting the word out for them. They were real successful. We made $2,500 hours just in teen splash nights, average of 80 kids a night. Probably our biggest one was 130, and we were competing with the fair one night, too, and it was raining. So, it was a good night, yeah.
It was, yeah.
I was surprised on that one. That wasn't crazy.
It's awesome.
So, there are three areas, I think, that we can really, you know, contribute, you know, going forward, so...any questions on Pinewood Pool? I can open up the questions as I talk, so it's easier that way, instead of telling everything.
Okay.
Good, okay. Summer camp, real successful again. Our numbers were down slightly from summer camp. We attribute that, we had some 13-year-olds that aged out in '14, about 12 to 15 of them. We just didn't replace them this year, so we're down about 16. We had 138 participants, down from like 154 in '14. We're going to try to do a little better on marketing, advertising, a little more outreach this year, try to get those numbers back up. Having said that, real successful camp. We saved 65% on our bus trip costs this year. I know you saw that probably in the bids. We did hold trips this year. We used to do like age-specific trips in the past. We tried to do hold trips to keep the bus cost down. I think that's where we're going to go in the future also. Those costs could go up in the future, you know, if we're...we've been lucky, we were at Walt Disney, so we were close to the pool, so those bus costs could go up slightly, you know, going forward, so we've got to keep that in account. Our in-camp programming was phenomenal. We had the Flyers come in, the 76ers, we had a blow-up planetarium. We even brought an art teacher in that did a great job with the kids, so I think we can even add to that next year. That was like bringing like the Franklin Institute to the camp. The planetarium was pretty cool. They just blew it up in the gym. You should check it out, get it back next year.
That was away. Actually, I heard about that.
Did you hear about it?
Yeah.
It was really cool. We also had a game show day, a group called Holly Rock. It was kind of like a takeoff Family Feud and Wheel of Fortune, and the kids had a ball. It was great. You should come check it out. It's a lot of fun. We started a counselor and training program this year. We had three that was very successful. That was really a great thing to see when they start. They're basically campers. They're coming in, we're giving them responsibilities from the first day of camp till the end, how they grow, and we think this is a great feeder program going forward, because, you know, people age out, counselors move on, we need that next wave, and I think this is a program that we should continue in the future. We had three this year. I don't think we should go more than five. We want to make that controllable. We don't want more campers as workers, so real successful for camp and looking forward to next year. Kind of miss it, so...any questions on camp?
All right. I could say from a parent whose child goes to the summer camp, I mean, me and my wife were thrilled. It was great. You know, our son, our oldest, was happy every day he came home, and we still hear about the game night.
It's fun.
The planetarium, you know, I know we were happy, and he had a good time, so...
Yeah, and I really got to give a lot of credit to Jessica Fox. I mean, she pretty much is the hands-on person at the camp. I kind of, you know, take care of the pool, she does the camp, and the camp staff, they did a great job. We had two new, you know, co-directors this year that were phenomenal, and they're just going to get better, and I just see bigger and better things for camp. You know, we're always already working on different ideas for next year, so you don't want the same thing over and over, so kids will have fun again next year.
Yeah, thank you.
So, all right. Summer concerts are wrapping up this week. Dennis Ostapowicz is...he's closing this week, September 6th. We added an extra concert this year compared to last year. We pretty much turned over the lineup by 50%. We brought in some new acts this year, and I attend most of the concerts, and the feedback's been very positive. They like the new groups, you know, like to tweak it, move some people out, bring some new ones in, not to seem old, seem old. So, you know, I see good things going forward. They want us to do more concerts, so I told them, you know, I'll try going forward in the future. Next program, adult kickball. That's wrapping up. This week, we're doing playoffs for, we have two divisions. The one division will finish this week. We had 15 teams. The other division will do their playoffs next week. I'd like to thank Levittown Continental for hosting us. That's been a great field for us to do the programs, so that'll be wrapping up. Probably the 14th is probably the championship for that, and real excited that program went well again this year, and looking to do some other programs going forward, which will lead us into some fall programming ideas. Children's kickball, we're reaching out. We're going to do a program in September and October on Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 11:00. I think we're going to use the Challenger Field over at Levittown Continental. We're going to do two age groups, 5 to 7, and 8 and up, an hour for each group. We had a small program for this last year, probably about 10, 11 kids, so we're going to branch out a little bit, see if we can get some more. You know, they'll get a shirt, a trophy, a little pizza party at the end. It's going to be a $20 cost for a resident, 22 for a non-resident, you know, real affordable. It's for fun. Hopefully, we get enough, we can make some teams up, and looking forward to that. Another program we have coming up, the Fall Festival. We did this last year. We did it in November last year. Don't worry, there's no cotton candy this year.
Yeah, I was going to say. I got roped into working with cotton candy this year.
We learned that, the cotton candy went everywhere. We're going to do something similar. We're going to bring some vendors out, we're going to do some bouncies, we're going to do the punt, pass, and kick competition again this year. We're going to get some food out, the food vendors out there. That's...it's more of a smaller scale of what we do in June, so another get back to the community, and I think we're doing it October 3rd, so I think the weather should be, you should be very, a lot better for us this year than it was. It was cold last year, because we didn't get there until November, if you remember, so I'm looking forward to that. 31st, Halloween's on the 31st this year, so we are going to have our annual Halloween party at the Senior Center on the 31st. Isn't it always on the 31st, isn't it? Wow. You're right. I'm just talking so fast tonight. They can edit that on the...
You mean it's on a Saturday?
Saturday, that's what I meant. That's what I meant, because usually it doesn't fall. Yeah. October 31st at the Senior Center. We'll probably do the pinata again and give awards out for costumes, that sort of thing, so we're looking forward to that. We're also looking to do, to partake off our kickball success, an adult co-ed volleyball league potentially. I'm working with an indoor facility in the township potentially could host us for that, so I'm going to be reaching out to our kickball teams to gauge an interest in that. That could be something we can do in the fall and the winter. We'll run some numbers and see if it's advantageous for us going forward, so I'm kind of excited about maybe, you know, doing something, you know, keep that momentum going, going forward. We also are going to start a photo contest in the township. We're going to do one in the fall and the spring. We're going to do two age groups, 17 and under and 18 and over, three categories, as Mr. Tens, you can help me, was it flora? Three categories, black and white. What was the third one we were talking about?
Landscape?
Landscape, yeah.
Wildlife?
Yeah, landscape, wildlife.
Or a fauna.
Yeah, there's so many great, great places in the township, not just at our community park, but throughout the township. And Rachel Hall, she's one of our new members of the park board. She's a very avid photographer, and this was kind of like her idea. I know she approached Mr. Tens about it, and we've been talking about it, and we're going to get our park board involved in that. They're going to do the judging and so forth. I think we can get some really cool pictures going forward, so that'll be in the fall and the spring. Which will take us, Christmas tree lighting this year will be held Saturday, December 5th at Three Arches this year. We're changing the location. We were at the Falls Anything Gazebo last year. We have got a lot of feedback that they want it at Three Arches this year, so we're going to do that. We're going to bring a tree in, hoping to get a 20-footer. We had a 16-footer last year. The guy's looking for me right now, so that's going to be 6 o'clock on December 5th.
It was freezing last year.
It was very cold last year.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's better. Well, we had the house there, so we can go in there this year.
Yeah. In Fallsington, it was wicked cold.
It was. Breakfast with Santa is going to be Saturday, December 12th at the Senior Center from 9:00 to 12:00. Santa Claus will be there taking pictures with the children, and we're really looking forward to that program. And we're also working on a Parents' Night Out activity in December. That's a great, you know, we did it on a Friday last year, gives the parents an opportunity to get out, get their last-minute shopping done. You know, we take them over, we get one of the schools and do some activities with them. I know Mr. Tens' son helped us last year. He was wheeling kids around the gym on scooters, and we did some obstacle courses. It was fun, they had a good night, so we're looking to do that again. I don't have a date for that just yet. I still have to work with the school district on that. And soccer and rugby are back in full swing. It's fall. Community Park will be buzzing with soccer and rugby players and everybody else at this point, so that's kind of where we're at on programs. I can give you a little update on some improvements we just had at the park. We just got the pavilion roofs redone down at the pavilion, down by the soccer fields is totally redone, looks great. They did some work on the pipe collars and some shingles on the other two pavilions, so I think going forward, that was a great, great investment for us. We have 10 new picnic tables under that new pavilion now. Two are handicapped. We put one on the other side by the Wee Chief Road entrance. They're recycled plastic, they're not the old wood with the heavy concrete that you can't move and the wood just bows. These things are heavy enough and durable enough, I think, to last for several years, so I think we're in good shape going forward there. And spring programs, we're going to do our Breakfast with the Bunny program, Easter egg hunt probably on the same day, and I'm looking to do a pitch-hit-and-run contest, and Ms. Rocco had reached out to me last year about that. That's similar to the punt, pass, and kick that we do. I think we can do that, you know, in coordination with our baseball season starting, our baseball season starting, so there'll be more information on that, we'll get some dates. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, how's the goose management?
Oh, yes. I think we definitely improved that. There's a group of 30 or 40 still down there. We had about 80 to 100, so I think we cut them down about 50%. If you've been down to the park, and I do ask, you know, a lot of our patrons, they down to the park, and I do ask, you know, a lot of our patrons, they have noticed a difference with the droppings around the pass. I've seen it too. The 40, 30 to 40 are the resident geese that it's very hard to scare away. So, it's still a challenge. We're still working on it. So, it's better though. It is, it is.
I thought it seemed cleaner. I didn't feel as though you were harassed as much.
Right, right. Yeah. And I just think that's something we got to keep, keep on it. Because if we let it go, they're going to come back in. I know we were real successful with the new goslings, any new geese haven't been coming in. I talked to Mr. Shadle about a week or two ago, and he was saying that. So, I think we're on the right track there. I really do. And it's a good investment. I think it's incumbent upon us to do.
You can notice a dramatic difference in the goose droppings.
Yes.
That aren't there. I mean.
Right. You can just visually see that just, you know, going around.
Mr. Harvey and myself were down there Wednesday night, and I pointed out to him that there's no geese around.
Right.
Not only were there not geese, but the goose droppings are a big.
Yeah, I mean, they had their moments where it'll come out a little bit and walk and walk across the drive there. But it's nowhere near what it was last year. You know, we saw, all saw that firsthand, I think, last year.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a lot better. So, kind of where.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Andrews?
None.
No? No, I mean, obviously, you, thank you first off for the, for the report, very complete, very thorough, very clear in terms of where we're going, where you're taking us and Jessica as well. And Mrs. Loce, obviously, he's been there, you know, helping you out and the park guards and the staff at the pool, the staff at the camp, you know, all really do a very, very good job. And that obviously starts with you and Jessica, so, and Ms. Fox. So, thank you for all the work you've put into it and the ideas. And we definitely have seen, you know, a ramping up of the activities, the ideas, the opportunities that we're providing for people here in Falls Township. So, it's been great. We do have a couple of things we wanted to discuss while you're here.
Sure.
And that obviously was, was kind of building into that.
Excuse me, Mr. Harvey.
Yeah.
We have a public comment.
Oh.
No, I just thought he was going to say public comment. I'm waiting for that.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, Mr. Kenny is letting me know that I'm allowed to continue. He'll, you know, he'll speak later.
Last time I see you, still.
So, we're going to kind of move to item four here, which is discussing Three Arches. In the township, we've been talking for a while now about the building, which is obviously over 300 years old. You know, and there are definitely areas of the building that need work, structural. And we do have, and we've had actually for a little while now, an estimate from a, an individual, a company that does this kind of restoration. It's not just a generic, you know, contractor. This is somebody that specializes in restoring old buildings. And without going through, this is a multi kind of page thing here. Do you want to just sort of summarize some of the basic ideas, what needs to happen there?
Well, I could basically tell you where, where the contractor's coming from. He's very open to working with us on priorities. I know Mr. Dent was very involved through the walkthrough. I know Mr. Gray did the walkthrough also. I mean, they can chime in also about what they think the priorities are. You know, would you want to say what you think?
A lot of the stuff is maintenance stuff that needs to be done, like the window sashes, stuff like that. There's shutters that still need to be replaced. This guy is good because he does a lot of work in Fallsington.
Yes.
He does a lot of restorations. And he does it right on site. Like he said, if we clear out our storage shed, use that as a workshop. This guy will take the shutter down, do them one at a time, put them back up. And his price was very reasonable compared to some of the estimates we received. A lot of the stuff is stuff that you won't even notice getting done, but it's stuff that has to be done.
It's important.
There's some water issues on the second floor, stuff like that. There is, if you go into the attic, there's an old repair to a beam that was done that just wasn't done right. And you can see on the second floor, in the kitchen, where the ceiling's sagging from this repair that was done a long time ago.
It's actually in the back room next to the kitchen, yeah.
Yeah. So, he's going to fix that correctly. But most of the stuff you won't even notice. But it's just stuff, I guess, when you have a 300-year-old building and you want to keep it period correct. It's expensive and it's hard to do. It's a specialty type work.
All right. Comments or questions from board members about this? And I have a question for the solicitor when we, when we have a chance here. But just thoughts, ideas about moving forward with some of the work here?
I guess I, two things really. I was kind of curious what our goal was for Three Arches and what we wanted to try to start doing there. And I guess, my second one part is a comment of just touching on, Mr. Dent said that this is the first estimate I've seen. I didn't see any other estimates that we may have received for the work.
Actually, I did try to contact a couple of other companies. I never got a return call. This was the only gentleman that did respond. And in second part, to go, our vision for Three Arches is to make it a community programming type of hub. It's not a perfect period correct facility. There's been a lot of updates and so forth. So, we had a meeting back in, in open house back last December to talk about these types of things. Use it for small meetings, small activities, the hearth-to-hearth cookery. We did an ice cream making, 18th century ice cream making thing back in July. About five or six people came. Stuff like that. I had an idea for a night with a medium there. My wife said she'd be excited about doing something like that. You know, stuff like that, candy making, cake decorating, you know, small, smaller scale type of events, bridal showers. You know, we think right now, the number, the good number there is 30 to have in that house comfortably. It's not, you can't, you can't pack them in. You say you had to be very specific. But there's a lot of cool ideas we can do in there. And the repairs need to be done, whether we're doing programs or not in there, to be honest. As long as we're, you know, managing and maintaining it. So, yeah. But I have a list of ideas I can share with you, you know, other ones, so.
When I said estimates, I think a lot of them were before you were even on this board.
Right.
Over the years, Mr. Sullivan got us some estimates for shutters and stuff that were out of this world.
$36,000 for shutters.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I don't know when they came in. I'm just saying, I've never seen them.
Right.
I've only ever seen this one that I have here.
Yeah, I tried to contact a couple of other, that never got back to me. This was, this guy jumped right on it. He's like, this is what I do. And I thought he was pretty impressive when we met him.
Yeah, he was. It was nice. He kind of gave us a Chinese menu of options.
He did.
You know, everything's itemized out.
He's willing to work with us, you know, if there's priorities on there, if there's things we want to not do right away. He's willing to just do what we need. And he also will take stuff back to his shop too that needs to be done in a more controlled environment, just to follow up with what Mr. Dent had said. He seemed very thorough, very knowledgeable about the repairs that need to be done there. I'm not an expert myself, but I was pretty impressed with him when we met with him. Yeah, and what, and what he came back with.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Rocco?
No, I, we budgeted for this last November, so.
It is budgeted for?
Yes, it is. $100,000.
Yeah, and I've had, you know, and Mr. Boraski, of course, asked a great question, which is, you know, the building was used pretty regularly for quite a while.
Right.
You know, especially things like the ladies' tees and things like that. It was the Christmas store, they did their craft thing. And then, for a while, it wasn't being used. And it's sort of, you know, it hasn't been used as much recently.
Correct.
I have had people ask me, you know, couldn't you do weddings there and things? And I'd tell them, because most people haven't been in it.
Right.
They see the building, it looks very big. It's a beautiful sort of front yard. Oh, you could do weddings there with a big tent and things. You really can't. It doesn't have the bathroom facilities, doesn't have the kitchen facilities. You know, it just doesn't set up for that. Like, you know, like you were talking about, doing small things, you know, small bridal showers or something. I suppose if somebody had a very small wedding, they could do it there if they wanted to.
Yeah, I've, I've taken a few people and tours have been interested in it. And they didn't realize how small, small it is inside.
I mean, people, you know, I mean, obviously, people were physically smaller, you know, 300 years ago. And you'd also, you know, I would have been, I would have been a giant back then, you know. But, and, you know, the houses just were not, you know, built like they are today. So, in terms of size and space and things like that. So, but in terms of moving forward with this, I wanted to ask the solicitor, the bid we're looking at to do all of this work, the bid that was put in by 18th Century Restorations Incorporated is $71,610. And again, this is, you know, a three-page, itemized, you know, real detailed things of exactly what's going to be done. This is obviously over the threshold for bidding.
A little bit.
However, however, given the sort of, I guess, intricate nature of this, it's not exactly something you just put out the bid and you get, you know, 14 people to bid on it. It's not like doing a road or doing, you know, something else.
Right. And I know we've been taking a look at this, and I'm looking at this list now. And it looks like a lot of this is going to fall more into that kind of specialized category, which we may be able to, to purchase without having to go out to bid. Some of this might not though. So, that's kind of something we have to go through. And I was just speaking with Mr. Gray, and I'm not sure. It was like this list was provided by the contractor as far as.
It was.
So, is there, is this an inclusive list? Or is this something that, everything on this list is something that the township wants to do, or?
I think he just put it out there as all our options of what he saw that the building needed.
That's exactly right. When he went through, he basically showed us, you know, you got to take care of this, you got to take care of that.
Right. But he's like, you can do this now. You don't have to do that right away. Yeah. Like, like Mr. Dent said, he gave us a lot of options there. So, we could probably, you know, tailor that down a little bit if we had to.
Sure. So, what we'll, what we'll do in the next couple of weeks leading up to the next meeting is verify whether or not this has to go out to bid, or if part of it does and part of it does not. And then, we'll be ready for the next meeting for that.
All right. And in the meantime, what I ask you to do, Mr. Andrews, is can I guess maybe prioritize this if we, if we had to choose.
Sure.
What has to be done.
Absolutely.
And if there's something that's not on this list that would be.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
And I haven't seen anything on there, you know, over at the building that is any worse or per se than it was when we looked at it before. So.
Right. It gives us kind of a game plan moving forward, I guess, in terms of seeing, you know, how to move forward and what we, what we need to move forward on. I mean, obviously, we own the building. It's important to keep it, you know, in the best condition we can keep it.
But if you look at item number 13, if you go around the back of the building, the sun pump, the way it jacks now, obviously, isn't it era period correct?
Yeah.
You know, so we were asking what you could do. So, stuff like that isn't a priority.
But at $500, obviously, if that was the only thing they were pulling out, that, you know, that wouldn't necessarily matter. So, it just a matter of kind of going through the list and figuring that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just one other thing. I'm just looking at the date from October. It's going to be 11 months. So, I'm just curious. We seem to every meeting be running the same issues where people, everybody swamped with work right now. You know, I'm just curious if we'd be able to get the guy back for that kind of money. That timeframe and he bid this work, he was probably desperate.
He, he checked in a few months ago with me. So, he's still very interested. I have a feeling, you know, I think it'd be a positive, we'd be in a positive direction. Can't guarantee it, but, but him checking in a couple of months ago seems to show me that, you know, he could fit us in. But that's something I'd have to find out, obviously.
And I think for this more specialized kind of work, this is a large job that you would be able to get contractors interested in.
Yep.
We only seem to have one.
That's correct. If we could, then you're correct.
There you go.
Okay. All right. So, we have a game plan moving forward with that. And then, item number five is discussion of funding through the Bucks County Open Space Program. I forget exactly when that bond was passed originally by the county. It was several years ago. But the township was allotted essentially.
$1,260,000.
Right. $1.2 million. We would have to pay three, three quarters of that, right?
Yes. No, we, 25%.
25%, sorry. Yeah, we paid 25% of that to cover costs. The county picks up the rest. We've had discussions before and talked about the fact that really isn't, you know, there are townships and communities in Bucks County where there's lots of open space that people want to preserve. And that's kind of the idea behind this that isn't really true of us. And a lot of the places in Lower Bucks County just don't have vast areas of farmland that we're going to, you know, sort of preserve. We did have an open space committee that took a look at some properties. They prioritized some properties. We actually did have some discussions over the past several years with a couple of property owners about how, you know, would they be open to selling this property to the township and trying to work out arrangements? And they just, they haven't really happened. So, what we've kind of changed our approach to is thinking about sort of like this other, other ways you can use this money. And it's not just to preserve open space, it's also to improve open space. And so, that's given us some ideas about areas to move into where we could use this money in a way that could help the township. Three quarters of it would be paid for by the county through this grant. And so, it does it obviously at a cheap price for us.
Right.
And we went round and round with different ideas. And I know that you were talking about, that you've looked into some things and you've submitted some ideas to the county just to kind of give some, you know, what do you think of these? And the board all had some input. So, I guess I'll just ask you to sort of summarize the areas where we're looking to do some work and then ideas of how to move forward.
Okay. Right now, we did meet with a representative from Bucks County Open Space, Jessica and myself, several months ago. You kind of get the, an idea what they're looking for, you know, going forward and that sort of thing. The two words he came up, came up with and still rings true, new and accessible. Anything we do, whether it's an improvement, they're looking for new and adding accessibility, which a lot of that's ADA, you know, compliant type of things. So, that's kind of the two words that have been drilled into our heads, you know, when we're looking at certain projects going forward. Now, I know we came up with three, three ideas I think we're going to present. We meet with them on September 23rd, commissioners, to present the ideas. So, I can go over the three ideas real quick with you right now. The first idea was a floating fishing pier down at the community park, an ADA accessible one.
Did you say floating?
Floating, yeah, floating dock, yeah. Floating pier, yep. I think that's what we were coming up with. Correct?
That seems.
Yeah. That's what I got from, yeah.
If it's ADA, you know, just say.
Is it not floating? Okay, I stand corrected then.
It would be pier, so it would be.
This pier, yeah.
It would be a pier, but then.
Yeah, okay.
That's how it'd be ADA accessible.
Yeah. Gotcha. Okay. So, you know, we're looking to present that, that program, you know, to the board. I've gotten some preliminary feedback from them. That is an idea they're very interested in hearing more about. So, I'll get with, you know, Mr. Jones, and we're going to talk more about that, you know, going forward. That's not my area of expertise. I'm sorry.
Hey, man, you're welcome.
The second, the second idea we came up with, Fall Soccer Club presented a proposal to do some regrading and rehabbing some of the fields down there at the community park. They gave us a nice detailed proposal. Sean Murphy from the club presented it to us. And we're thinking we can take that there and, you know, see what we can get feedback-wise. This meeting will be pretty much a give and take, I think. They're going to go. We might have to come back to the drawing board on a few things with that idea. Because the deal with that is, they're looking at that maybe as existing space and nothing new. That could be our challenge going forward with that. I'm going to, this is going to be a learning, fishing expedition, almost, you know, dealing with the commissioners up there on this. So, I'll know a little more about that, you know, what we can and can't do under the guise of the open space, you know, plan with, with that project. And the third project was to convert grass to a turf infield down at the Mill Creek Sports Complex. Again, that's another one I think we're going to learn a little more about. They might ask us to come up with some more, you know, detailed information. There's probably soil tests, I believe, that might have to be done when, anytime you convert grass to a turf type thing. And, you know, kind of right now, it is kind of a little bit of an unknown, you know, under the guise of it. Because the two key words, new and accessible, is what we got to keep in mind. That's what the guy keeps drilling into me. So.
Sounds like new baseball field, new soccer field.
Well, you know, I mean.
Accessible.
Accessible. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. It's a bit of a learning curve. I think we're all kind of learning, you know, going forward. I've, you know, sent some emails back and forth with the gentleman. He's been very supportive, you know, as far as giving us, you know, you know, honest feedback of what, you know, what we need to present and what we shouldn't present.
You're meeting with them when, Brian?
September 23rd.
And there is still a deadline for this year, right?
I believe so, yes. I think it's the end of, end of 15.
Do you know when that is?
End of 15, I believe.
Last calendar year?
I'll say the commissioners. Applications have to be in by December 31st.
Oh, just the applications?
Yeah.
So, that does give you some time for if it is.
Yeah. 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 Because I, yeah, I think this is just step one. That we're going to come back, hey, you got to amend this. Or, hey, this might not be the greatest idea, to be honest. I don't, you know, I can't say, say how they're going to, you know, judge it. So, but you'll be the first to know. So.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we have, you know, we did ask the, I guess, the four leagues, the three little leagues, and also Fall Soccer Club, just to give us some ideas. Because we thought about the fact that we don't really have any open space to buy. You know, so maybe we can improve some of the existing facilities we have now. And we did give back a couple of proposals Mr. Andrews talked about. So, we're not the final, as you just heard, not the final determining factor in this. It is technically the county's money. And so, they determine whether or not the project's approved or not. You know, a lot of communities haven't spent any of this money. In fact, the deadline's been extended. It was supposed to be last December.
Yes.
And because so, so few communities had actually spent their money, the county extended it for a year. And part of the reason, again, in Lower Bucks County, a lot of communities just don't have anything to spend the money on.
Right.
And a lot of communities don't have the 25% matching. They don't have the money themselves to match whatever.
Correct.
The project would be. So, so for those reasons, you know, the money's just sort of kind of sitting there. And nobody's really used very much of it. So, we're hoping that maybe they keep that in mind. You know, that it's not like, again, for, for some communities further up county, this is easy for them. You know, the, the hard part for them is figuring out what, what farmland they're going to buy. For us, it's, you know, what do we do you know, what do we do with this money? So, um, and we've, so I appreciate your work on it, and obviously, the, uh, the leagues and the, the board members have had some different ideas. The, the peers, uh, you know, Mr. Dent's something he's been looking for, for a while. So, we'll wait to hear back from you, uh, in late September.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any final comments or questions for Mr. Andrews?
No, thank you, Brian.
No, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Take care.
Can you have some, uh, a little comment?
Uh, we, uh, Mr. Kenny, we're not taking any action, but you can, I guess, come up here and...
You may speak.
Give your two cents if you want.
All right.
Call Mr. Andrews back up here. I'm not sure if that's good or bad for him.
I don't know. I just wanna say, being a resident of Falls Township, since you've come here, I think you've been a big improvement. And I'm glad to have you. And like I told you before, anytime you need, beating any of them up, just let me know.
On that note, I gotta go.
Thank you.
Where's your assistant?
Mr. Marani, go ahead.
Hey, Brian. Stay clear, buddy. Take care. You too, now. You take care of yourself.
Your partner's off his leash, Mr. Marani.
You're a good Irishman, aren't you, Mr. Galloway?
I, I hope so.
Right. Don't the little people, what do they call those things?
Leprechauns?
Leprechauns.
Yes.
I'm, I'm a good Irishman, too.
Yes, I know you are. Shouldn't they be in a forest? Isn't that where they live or something?
Uh, I don't know. If you find one...
Ask you, why, what's he doing here?
If you find one, let me know.
What's Mr. Dent's doing here? Here's one. Uh, very briefly, uh, the, uh, the billion 300,000 roughly, okay? It, it's, and our matching funds are gonna be somewhere around 318,000 dollars. And it just seems to me that when these things are dangled, these grants, uh, you gotta understand, they, they don't fall off of trees.
Sure.
They come from taxes. So, and it seems to me like we're searching for some way to spend this money. If we don't have anything to really spend it on, let it go. We don't need it. It's as simple as that. 318,000 dollars, a lot of money, especially, I think, this year, Mr. Harvey, uh, for us. Didn't we take, uh, 6 million dollars out of the reserve fund?
This is a budget item for 2015.
Yeah, we budgeted, actually, we budgeted 300 and whatever, 18,000 for several years now. It's just...
Right, right. But I'm talking about 6,095,429 set aside for the complex, which was taken out of the reserve. Out of the budget. It's in the budget.
It's in the budget. That money has not been spent.
Yeah, we haven't spent the money.
I'm not saying you spent it.
Right.
I'm saying that's where we are.
Right.
Because we have, may need a legitimate commitment for that money.
Sure.
The complex.
Right.
So, I, 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 I wouldn't be, uh, too anxious to, uh, to spend that billion dollars that they're dangling in front of us. If it's something we really don't sorely need, don't spend the 318,000.
Yeah, we're not looking at spending the 1.2 million dollars anyway.
Yeah, we wouldn't anyway.
I understand that, but whatever you spend, okay? It seems to me, you're searching for something to spend it on. If you ask me, uh, you know, Guido here is 500,000 dollars, I wouldn't have to search. I know what I would do with it. So, if you're searching for it, you're looking for a way to spend it. We don't need that.
Well, I, I understand your point, but the fishing pier came up, what was that, two years ago?
Yeah, at least.
And when the estimates came back, the bids were a little bit higher than we wanted to spend. So, that's something we've been talking about before we even considered using open space money.
Yeah, and, and I, and when you, when you came up with the fishing pier, I was one of them that came here and says, "We've got 52 places surrounding Falls Township where people could go fish." What the heck do we need a fishing pier for? How many people, you know, do we have to, do we have to accommodate a fishing pier?
You know, you don't, you don't spend very much time at Falls Township, Lee, I'll tell you that, 'cause there's...
I spend a lot of time at Falls Township. I live here.
A lot of people fishing down, yeah.
The other one was the soccer fields.
Fifty-two other places to go fishing.
They wanna go here. This is the best park in the, in the county.
The, the other one was the soccer fields. The soccer fields are very well-used, and the idea of restoring them has been something that the soccer club's been asking us for, for many years.
I, I would not, I wouldn't object to that. All I'm saying is...
No, you're right. I'm just saying, it's an opportunity to be able to restore them with the open space money. It's not like we saw the open space money and said, "Hey, let's just go restore soccer fields."
No, but you would, you would have to admit, you're searching for things to do with it.
Well, I think we're searching for good uses for it. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. I mean, we could've, you know, we, there was all kinds of ideas of, "Let's buy this property, let's buy that property," and we didn't wanna do it, 'cause what's the point? What's the value in it? Let's do something that has value. Um, and, you know, I agree with, like Mr. Rocco said, we're not looking to spend, you know, 1.2 million dollars on the three projects. I mean, but, but we're saying, okay, well, here's a project that might cost, you know, 60,000 dollars. If we can get the county to, to pay for 75% of it, then why not do it?
And whatever you do, you gotta remember this. You have to maintain when that money's gone.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, you wanna buy somebody a house, you give them the money, he buys the house, he's gotta maintain it.
Yeah.
And everything we do has gotta be maintained after we do it. Like the dock, whatever you come up with, a fishing pier, long after your money's gone, you're gonna have to maintain it. So, be careful how, all I'm saying is be careful how you spend your money.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I think we are.
I spend all my time here.
Yes.
And you know I care about this place.
I know you do. I'm not questioning that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item six is consider application for the Fall 2015 Bear Root Tree Program. Mr. Gray has worked a lot over the past several years with, um, our Shade Tree Commission, and they've come up with an interesting, uh, kind of program this year. Mr. Gray?
Yes, thank you. The township received the application for the annual Fall 2015 Bear Root Tree Program. Uh, the bear root trees would be available in late October or early November for planting shortly thereafter. Uh, the township has done similar bear root tree programs in prior years, and over 410 trees have been purchased through the Tree Vitalize Program by the township. Uh, there is a request for 30 trees to be considered in this purchase. Uh, of the 30, 15 would be planted on township property. Uh, the other 15 would be available to the residents through the newly-formed Residential Bear Root Tree Program. This program offers residents the opportunity to purchase trees for planting on their property. Um, there is an application that would be available for residents to fill out the type of tree they would like to purchase. Uh, there are some guidelines for, um, planting it, and, um, that would be available here at the township building. Uh, the board is asked to consider the purchase of the 30 trees as part of the Tree Vitalize Program for 750 dollars.
Okay. So, um, comments or questions for Mr. Gray? Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no, just, I think it's wonderful that, uh, they would be available to the residents as well. It, uh, it's a great program. Thank you.
Mr. Brasky?
No questions.
Mr. Dent?
No.
Mr. Rocco?
They've none.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I wanna thank, it is a neat idea. I agree with Mr. Galloway, the idea of, of offering, 'cause we usually buy them and we, you know, our staff goes out and plants them somewhere in the township. Um, a lot of them in the park and other areas. But this would actually offer half of them just to residents here in the township. Um, there are some, um, criteria, as, as Mr. Gray said, there are a couple of different kinds of trees. Obviously, looking at things that are more, you know, native, uh, to Falls Township, uh, or to Pennsylvania, this area of, of the country. We want something that's gonna have a good, uh, success rate in terms of once you plant it. Planning bear root trees, I've learned this over the past couple of years since we've started this program, uh, is different than just planting a tree reliable to buy at some nursery somewhere. You don't just sort of dig a hole and drop it in and cover it. So, there actually is a little bit of a, sort of a, a, a learning process, sort of a mini class that you go through on how to care for them and how to plant them. But, um, you're talking about getting a tree for, um, you know, and it would be a relatively, pretty small tree. These are relatively small. You're not getting something that's, you know, 15, 20 feet high. But, um, you know, for 25 dollars, um, you know, getting a nice tree and, uh, through the township is, I, I think it's a great program. So, um, no comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve the expenditure of 750 dollars?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Minutes from August 18th, 2015. Comments or questions, corrections?
Excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Pullen.
Okay. If there's no, um, debate or discussion, is there a motion to approve the minutes August 18th, 2015, as presented?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Uh, executive session, we all have a need for. Manager comment?
Yes. Just one item tonight, Mr. Chairman. Just an announcement that the waste gas milers are ready for signature, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. Um, all right. So, board comment. Uh, we'll start with, um, Mr. Brasky, you wanna go first?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, it was easy. Uh, Mr. Dent?
I just wanna comment at the end of the last meeting during manager comment, there was, um, some confusion over some of the extension requests. One was for the Rite Aid, uh, and stores that are proposed at the old Acme site. And then there was a request for an extension of the Wawa, which is a mistake. There is no proposed Wawa plan. The Wawa plan is gone. Uh, there was some confusion between the, our office and the solicitor's office that represented Wawa and the Rite Aid, but, um, there absolutely is not a, a Wawa plan anywhere. I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause there was a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
Um, I also wanna add that school starts tomorrow, so be on the lookout for school buses. A lot of kids running around the streets again. It's getting dark earlier again, so just be careful. That's all I have.
Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no comments tonight, thank you.
Mr. Rocco?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, just a couple of things, um, notifications, and I think this is probably on our web, or on our website possibly, but also on the Township channel. Um, a bulk disposal day, waste management, is gonna be Saturday, October 17th. I know it's early, but I figured, you know, start thinking about it now. Um, bulk disposal program is for residents, uh, homeowners of Falls Township in Tullway Town. Um, proof of residency is required. Essentially, you, um, if you can fit it in the truck, you take it down wherever you're taking, take it down to the landfills. Uh, they'll just ask you for ID to show that you're a Falls or Tullway Town resident, and you can drop off anything you want. Um, with some exceptions, hazardous waste, obviously you can't take down. The refrigerators, air conditioners, freezers, uh, propane, uh, cylinders, car batteries, oils, paints, uh, things like that. Uh, and there's a list of, of things you can and can't bring, so it's always...
I believe it's electronics as well.
Elect, oh, right, yeah, electronics as well.
Yeah, TVs, yeah.
Yeah, electronics as well. So, um, and there is a Falls Township newsletter, which will be going out, uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Um, getting back into the swing of doing two of these a year. There was a couple of years where we had trouble finding a company to do it for us, but, uh, we've, uh, we found a, a company now that, uh, does a very good job of putting these together for us with the help of our staff. Uh, and so we'll be sending these out. We did one in the spring, and we'll do another one here. And I actually, uh, I don't know if Mr. Gray, if you received this or not, um, but, um, something to keep in mind, a, a contest for best communications, uh, and social media thing, so I'll, I'll share that with you in a minute. Okay? Um, and an issue that came up, it's been coming up recently, and I just wanted to take a moment and to, uh, kind of explain some, some things about it. Uh, there was a new article in the newspaper, and there's also been some residents who have contacted us regarding the question of easements. Um, Lower Bucks Joint Municipal Authority has been very strict over the past couple of years of enforcing easements that they have on people's properties for, uh, you know, water and sewer pipes underground, uh, especially in the Levittown area, which is where Lower Bucks Joint has their, or, um, where they serve here in Falls Township. Uh, and there's a lot of confusion, it seems, about what an easement is and who's supposed to do what on an easement. Um, to be very, very clear, an easement is a legal agreement between a property owner and some kind of utility or governmental agency. All right? Um, essentially what it says is that that utility or government agency has the right to go into that property to perform maintenance, to, you know, tear up an old pipe, put in a new pipe, um, to do, you know, pretty much anything they want, uh, on that property. Uh, the easement, unless it is with Falls Township, and we don't have a whole lot of easements with, with property owners, but unless it's with us, um, it is not anything that we have any knowledge of. I mean, I think some people, and I've kind of learned this over the past couple of weeks, and this issue's been coming up, um, I think people assume that because we're the township and we handle things like permits, we handle land developments like we did, that we have somewhere in this building, this giant file, uh, on every single property in Falls Township that has every detail from when the house was built, whether it was Levitt who built it or William Penn who built it, you know, that we have all the details of everything that was ever done and all the property guidelines and, and barrier and, uh, markers and, and outlines of where the property is. And, and that's not actually something we have. Um, it is, you know, we don't have the deed to, copies here of the deed to every property in Falls Township. We don't have that. Doesn't, in, no township does. No borough does. Um, that is something that the recorder of deeds in Bucks County has, and it's something that property owners have. Um, and I'll be very honest and say that I wasn't even aware of that. Uh, you know, I was talking to the solicitor about some issues happening in the township, and I said, "Well, you know, shouldn't homeowners have a copy of their property, you know, deed that shows where easements are?" 'Cause we don't have that here. And he said, "Well, you do. Uh, when you're sitting down signing all those papers when you buy a house, you know, and it seems like an hour or two goes by and all you're doing is signing your name, and pretty soon your, your hand starts getting tired and you just, you know, Ms. Gallagher just went through all this." Um, and you, you walk out of there happy, 'cause you have a new house, and there's stack of, that stack of, stack of papers you have just sort of thrown in a box or put in a file somewhere, and you never think about it again. One of those documents is, you know, the, a copy of the deed, uh, and that does have your easement on it, uh, if you have an easement on your property, and a lot of people do. Uh, if you have, you know, the poles in your backyard, a lot of Levittown houses have the, you know, whether it's Comcast or Verizon or, or Pico, whatever it is, you know, you have an easement. Okay? And if somebody needs to get in there, no matter who it is, if Verizon needs to come and put in new, you know, telephone poles or replace the wires, or if they need to dig up the front of your yard to put in fiber optics, they have the right to do that. Uh, there's nothing this township can do to stop them, because they have the legal right to do that. Um, and so I think people sometimes assume that if they put in for, you know, some kind of project, um, they're putting in a pole, uh, that if there's some easement, we're gonna know about it. Um, if the easement's not with us, we don't know about it. You know, we don't have a file here that we look and say, "Oh, wait, there's an easement there." The homeowner actually has that easement record. Um, and so a lot of people, and we're, we're trying now to make a point of reminding people of this and changing some of the forms we have in the township when you come in to do a permit for a project, just so you're aware of the fact that we don't have all of that information. It, it's kind of like, you know, we don't have marriage records here, 'cause a marriage is a legal binding of two people. Uh, we don't have birth certificates and death certificates. Those are legal documents. We don't have those here. It's not anything that has any interest to us, you know? Um, same thing with an easement, in many cases. And again, unless it's with, just with us, we don't have records of every easement, you know, that everybody has. I mean, we just don't have that. Um, when you submit a permit for a project, we're looking, our staff here looks for zoning, uh, to make sure that what you're doing is, is in, is proper in terms of where your property's zoned. We're looking at setbacks, rear yard, front yard, side yard. They're looking at height, if you're doing a second floor addition or something like that. Um, they're looking at impervious surface, to make sure if you're doing a driveway that you're not, you know, going over impervious surface, which could cause water to go into your neighbor's, uh, yard. Uh, that's the thing, those are the things they're looking for. Um, and to make sure it's, you know, done properly in terms of safety, if you're doing something, make sure it's done safely. Um, easements are something, and I understand why people are confused. I, I, I do understand that people just naturally assume that easements and permits go hand in hand, and, and they don't. And it's not just something here in Falls, it's everywhere. Uh, that's just, that's the legal arrangement. One of the things you sign when you buy that house is signing on to the fact that that easement is there. And if, I mean, I have an easement on my property that I didn't know was there until Falsington Woods, which was, you know, the housing development behind me was built. And because my house was right next to that area, that used to be all woods, um, and I was on the planning commission, I get a chance to see the plans, and I said, "Oh, my God, there's an easement on my property." I had no idea. Uh, it's a TOFA easement. So, if TOFA needs to come on my property to So if TOFA needs to come on my property to dig that pipe up, they don't, doesn't matter that, you know, there's rose bushes and, you know, you know, arborvitae trees there and a little bit of a fence and things, they don't, that doesn't matter to them. It's gonna move, it's gonna go. And that's the legal right they have. And it does make sense, because that pipe is serving hundreds, if not thousands, of people. So who am I to say, no, you can't fix that pipe? I don't care if hundreds or thousands of people, you know, don't have water or sewer. No, obviously, I can't do that, you know? I had to think about the, you know, the greater good part of it. So, again, we're gonna try and, and do a better job of just educating people just so they understand our powers and our knowledge of things and where our limitations are as a township and what we are able to do and not able to do. And I've had to have conversations or, you know, interactions with a couple of people this, this summer specifically, who've had run-ins with Lower Bucks Joint and want the township to stop them from enforcing an easement. And we have absolutely no legal authority to do any of that. Again, it would be like, you know, a couple that's married having a, some kind of disagreement and asking the township to, you know, settle the dispute, you know? We're, I mean, it's, it's a legal arrangement between two parties, not the township. It's not an issue that we are involved in. So, again, I'm, I know people are upset because they have sheds that need to be taken down or other things that need to be moved, and they're trying to sell their properties